...seven oh eight. I'm the clerk of the planning board. Vin, obviously, is not here anymore. He was re-elected. Before we go any further, I'd just like to personally thank Vin for his many, many years of service to the town. He's done a tremendous job working for the town. He's done a lot for the town. He's been in, he's on the school committee. He was assessor, baseball coach.
Basketball.
Basketball coach. He's, he's just done everything. He's, he was largely, a lot of people don't know this, he was largely responsible for getting Malone Road and Mount Jeff. And those two projects would not have happened without Vin Ritchie. So, this town would be a very different town had it not been for Vin.
I'd like to say that I'm gonna really miss him. His institutional knowledge goes back twenty years. Like, you ask him a question, you got an answer from his memory bank.
Right.
Really a tremendous resource. He's also extremely skilled at procedure and process and conducting a meeting, keeping a meeting orderly and, and moving along in a well-structured way without ever a sense of overbearing on anybody or anything. He always was, he's told me to be quiet a few times, but he always did it nicely.
That's good. That's good. I've run many meetings myself. Sometimes it's difficult.
Yeah, he was very, very professional. And I, I'm gonna suggest that before we have too many more meetings, we oughta have him back. And we oughta have some, I don't know, tea and crumpets or something. And give him a nice pat on the back and a strong sense of thanks. He just really deserves a strong, strong thank you.
We, uh, we are doing the same. We're having him back. We recognized him the other night, but we're having him back. We're gonna put something together for him to recognize that service as well, because it's much deserved.
Yes, it is. So, okay, so the first order of business that I put on the agenda was introductions. I thought it would be a good idea, so everyone knows each other. So, we get to know each other. We have to work together. After we do that, we'll move right into picking chairman. And from there, we'll go into picking and the other things. And we'll go through the, some of the items that are in the folder that came in the last week or so. So, hopefully, we'll be out of here by eight o'clock or so. Okay, I'll start, since my name's with B.
What did you just say? You, you said we'll be out of here by what?
Eight o'clock.
You wanna make a bet?
Yeah.
I don't bet against the new board. We'll see how, we'll see where we go.
My name is Tom Bracco. I live at twenty-eight High Street. I've lived in town for thirty-eight years. I brought my children up here. They've all gone through the Quabbin School System, and they've done a great, they all have great careers, and they're great people. Houston's a great town. It's a great place to, to be. I grew up in Holden, went in the military for a few years. And I went back, graduated from Worcester State College with a degree in geography and urban and regional planning. I started my own commercial roofing company. It was a pretty sizable company. I ran it for close to thirty years and sold it and retired into farming, which is what I do now, is I'll keep farming until the money's gone. So...
It's not profitable, huh?
I've been involved in many, many boards. I was on the Board of Directors of the National Roofing Association, the Northeast Roofing Association, hybrid co-op, just to name a few. So, that's my background and what I do. So, Kendall? Who's next?
Dee. No, no, Craig.
Craig.
Actually, you should have been first. You should have been first.
Oh, sorry.
Oh. Yeah, Tom, I'm not gonna go in too much detail like you did.
It's okay.
But I'm Craig. I think everybody knows me by now. Live on Amber Lane and look forward to four more years on this board.
And, well, you also serve in town.
Well, yeah. I like to keep down on the down low.
Well, privacy is important.
Yeah.
It's true.
I, I don't know if that's, I, I think we oughta talk about what we do. And there may be a time when that's important, so.
All right. I work for the highway department. Public knowledge now. Hope everyone enjoys it.
Well, you, you said that when you ran for office.
Yeah, I believe I did.
You did. I kinda did. You said that. This is not new to anybody.
Okay, Kendall?
Kendall Daly. Been in town for thirty-two years. I live at seven Ed Clark Road. I worked for the Department of Defense during the Vietnam era, and then I went to work for computer companies. Then I, now I'm semi-retired. I'm a ski instructor in the winter, and I drive bulldozers and excavators and shovels in spring, summer, and fall. And I have a lot of bicycle riding.
Just how much do you ride in a year?
Six thousand miles minimum. I ride all year, Tom.
Well, I understand that. I said a year.
Yes.
Who's next?
Pete. Uh, Bill Homans. I, I think I have you all on the years here. I've been here almost sixty-two, sixty-one years. Born and raised here.
You don't look bad for eighty, then.
Well, I've been on many boards, many, worked for the town since I was sixteen. The Fire Department, the Police Department. I've been on the zoning Board of Appeals for over thirty years, Main Street Committee, the Board of Assessors. Been very involved with the town. It's very important to me, and I really care about this town. It's kind of, it's our home. And it's, I think it's a great place, place to live. And I'm here because a lot of folks wanted to see what would change. And I'm here to help, help that. And hopefully, I can bring that to the board and some of the knowledge I have. I've ran numerous boards. I'm the president of the Pinecrest Property Owners Association. Been the president there and running those meetings for many years, which is working out really well now. Hopefully, I can bring that to the board. If you folks can show me how you do things, maybe I can show you how I do mine.
Great. And I'm Tom Robinson. Live at five Brigham Street, just past the church on the way down towards Westminster. And I've been here since November nineteen seventy-two. I came to town, bought a house, and said, "We'll live here for a year and a half or so." And when we find out...
Till you met me.
Well, maybe. But we'll live here for a short time until we get the lay of the land. And after forty-six years, I'm still here, because it's a good place. Raised four children. They all went on through this school system and on to additional education, higher education. I myself, by education, am an engineer. I've worked all over the place, but I never, I chose to never move my family. And by all over the place, I mean Chicago, Indiana, Germany. You know, it's, it's been long commutes, but it's, it's been very good. And I, I've learned a lot about projects and how to, how to run projects and big projects. But this municipal work, since I've been retired, this municipal work has just been very, very interesting. It's, it's a lot of fun. It's, you, you, some, quite a bit of engineering in this job. And I, I really enjoy it. And look forward to some more.
Great. Okay, let's move on. We have to pick chairman and a clerk. So, do you have any motions for chairman? Who wants to?
Is there any strong feelings about who would volunteer?
I would like to see Mr. Bracco.
I would like to do it. I've, I've thought about it, and I would really like to be the chairman if everyone wants to have me, so.
Well, then, I'd make a nominee, what do you call it? A motion.
Motion.
Make a motion to nominate or, or make a motion to elect you as chairman?
Nominate.
All right. I nominate Tom Bracco as chairman.
I second that.
Any discussion?
Before we do that, I'd like to compliment you on your clerkship. And I wonder who will take it if you don't do it.
We'll get to that right after this, then.
Okay, but you did a very good job as a clerk.
Thank you. That's why I get promoted. Okay. Well, like, we'll vote then? All in favor? opposed? All set.
So, you're, you're clerking tonight?
I'm, well, I'm clerking till now, and we're gonna pick a clerk. And I appreciate it. I'm, I'm gonna do the best job I can. And I may be sitting in this chair here, but it's gonna take me a long time to fill Vin Ritchie's shoes. I can tell you that right now. But Vin has agreed to help us with any technical questions when they come up, so. Okay, next order of business is a clerk. Any volunteers to be a clerk? No?
I can't, right.
Kendall?
I don't have the time. Looking at me.
I'm squeezed for time, because I think, as most of the town knows, there's also a library roof project. And I'm going to be consumed to a greater than, a greater degree than I have been in the past with library work because of that project. So, I'm gonna ask that, I'm gonna nominate Craig.
Craig doesn't want to.
I have less time than you guys do.
Well, we'll just leave it, I think we just leave it open for now, I guess. Does anyone wanna change their mind?
I don't have the time. There's no way.
This perhaps meshes with our new clerk, our new hired staff clerk.
Yes.
If we could figure out a way to have her, or him, whoever that is, pick up some percentage of the work, we may find are relieving our actual board member of some of that work.
Is there any way possible to have her come to the meeting?
Well, I talked to Ryan about that today before he left, and he's working hard to figure out what he's doing. He's juggling balls and personnel, and he said he's working on it, and he'll hopefully have something shortly.
Okay.
So, I think we have to just wait to...
I, for one, would like to see the qualifications for that position and the position description. I think we have an opportunity to hire a slightly different shape and form of position than we've had historically. Or if historically is perfect, then we just roll with it. But I think the committee ought to be distributed, or the board ought to be distributed, the qualifications page and the position descriptions page, to see that when we do hire somebody, we're all at least understanding what we think that person ought to be doing.
Or come under the job classification requirements.
Yeah. I don't know what to call them here, but I think everybody knows what I mean. What, what do you have to do? What do you have to be to be that position qualifications? And what does that position entail, the work description?
Okay, so, we could possibly say that we'd like Brian to communicate with us during the hiring process.
Absolutely.
Is that a fair statement?
Yes. I don't think decisions should be made without that.
Oh, this is a question. Are you, are you hiring a new?
We're not hiring anyone right now. I mean, it's, the, the money's been approved at the town meeting. At my understanding, you probably might know more about this. The meetings, the money's been approved by the town at the annual town meeting. There was a little bit more money added to the account, so Ryan has to work on how he's gonna do that. So, that's where we, that's why, yeah.
I respect Ryan's role, but I don't think it should be a unilateral decision. I think it has to, candidates should come before us, and we should look at what the job description says and whatnot.
Okay. Well, I'll just, I'll send Ryan an email that we like, try to be involved in the hiring process a little bit.
Can we get the paperwork?
Okay. Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I just don't know, and maybe I should know this, but it's never come up, because we have, you know, chair, a vice chair, and clerk. So, it's very unlikely you're gonna have a meeting, or have to hold, have a meeting where you don't have one of those who can take over, like you are tonight. Unless you're taking over. Without an actual clerk, I don't know this, but can a member take over the meeting as far as, as long as there's a quorum and all the other requirements are there?
Yes.
Yes, they can?
They just have to nominate him, acting.
Acting, okay.
I've seen your, your board run with several people, or with a person absent, and different people.
Dan is saying specifically, if, if he's, if he's the chairman of the select one, if he's not there, then whoever the vice chair is.
Like...
Have you ever elected a vice chair in the past?
There's been times when both you and Mike have been absent.
But then Jeff is the clerk. So, we have, that's why I'm saying it's never got to...
Oh, okay. I didn't know he was the clerk.
It's never got to a scenario where we didn't have an elected, or whatever you wanna call it, nominated position that had to come up to a meeting. So, I just didn't know the procedure.
I suppose there's no reason why we can't elect a vice chair.
But your position, your, your input on this was that a person can step forward at the meeting?
You've done it.
That's right.
Yes.
Mark Dimmick did it.
But I didn't necessarily do it right. I'd like to know if it's right.
As long as you have a quorum.
As long as you vote for it.
The chairman is not present, and that person is voted by a majority, you can proceed. But again, you know, it changes again on special permit where you need a supermajority and...
Yeah, that's a little special.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
I make a motion, we elect a vice chairman.
Second? Anyone want a second?
Well, it probably, it probably honestly makes sense if we're not gonna hold out on the clerk item, or if we are gonna hold out on the clerk. Since, you know, I'll second that motion.
Who wants to do it? Someone's gotta make a nominate, nominate.
I, I have some limited experience. I had when Vince had his heart attack, or open heart surgery, whatever it was. I'll, I'll be glad to do it.
Okay.
But I can't nominate myself, I don't think.
I tell you, no, we have to...
I'll nominate, Tom.
Well, first, we have to vote on doing it. So, we're gonna make a vote.
Okay.
Any discussion on, we already had the discussion on, all in favor of electing a vice chair? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll make a motion to ask Tom to do it.
I'll make a motion.
Kendall? I wish I worked like a clerk, okay?
I'm already missing Vin.
Thanks. Second?
I'll second that.
Well, all in favor?
I can vote for myself.
No, you can't.
All right.
Okay. Dan, this isn't as easy to make it look.
I guess, I don't think it's easy, Charlie.
So, is this on the agenda, what we're gonna do, or?
Yep, this is the next one we're doing, minutes.
Oh, we're doing all in minutes? Oh, my goodness.
Well, you can't, it doesn't matter if you weren't here, so you can vote, so.
I'm left out.
Have you got, everyone, these have been emailed to everyone? You've got copies of them?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. You got, you want a copy?
Uh, I read them on...
You read them on mine, okay, great. Tom, you've got copies?
Yep.
So, first, we're gonna go through, there's six of them. And Patty has assured me that this clears everything up in the past. So, we have all of our minutes done. We're starting the year with a clean slate.
Oh, that's awesome.
Okay.
Library roof?
Thanks, Dan.
Good luck, Dad. Take care.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for staying to help, Dan.
Was he here for a specific reason, or?
Nope, he just wanted to come.
Oh, okay, good.
Okay, July, the first one is July fifth, two thousand seventeen? A year ago. Any comments?
I have one for May thirty-first.
You should have one for July fifth.
This one. Now, I don't know if we, I don't know what order we're doing them in, but this is the one he just picked up. This is the one we're gonna look at.
Okay. Any comments or changes?
Make a motion to accept the minutes of July fifth.
Uh, Craig, I can't remember your name, Craig. Second?
Oh, I'll second that.
Tom Robinson, uh, second. All through, and vote. All set.
Now, you guys changed the name and whatnot, but, uh...
Yeah.
No, no, actually, we should leave his name on there, because he was chair in two thousand seventeen, but we should sign it as chair in two thousand eighteen.
Bill, I'm gonna put you abstained.
Yes. I'm abstaining on all.
Huh? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, the next one is May second, two thousand eighteen. God, I guess I'm, night, pretty boring.
Driving, driving them home.
You're driving anybody else?
I know. Geez, well, I told you we're gonna be out of here at eight. Okay, May second. Any, two thousand eighteen?
Who was the other gentleman? I recognize.
Mr. Smith, he said.
We, we oughta write him down, because he's supposed to be again.
He did, he did.
Jack Smith, okay.
Yep, thank you. May second.
Make a motion to accept the May second minutes.
Motion. Check that, anyone?
I'll second that.
Which one are we on?
May second.
Yes.
May second.
Yep.
Any comments? Uh, can I vote?
Both accept.
Both accept. Okay, all approved. This one is May thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. I know.
You remember that?
That's twenty seventeen, not twenty eighteen?
Twenty seventeen.
There's also a twenty eighteen.
Yeah, that's one. We share on the same page.
Yeah, yeah. Kendall, you weren't here. Uh, Craig, you weren't here.
No.
Motion to accept?
Make a motion to accept these. Uh, May thirty-first, meeting minutes.
Yep, Kendall's second?
I second.
All vote? Approved?
All favor?
All favor?
Abstained.
Abstained. Craig. This one is September sixth, two thousand seventeen. Craig, you were here then? I remember this one.
This is the continuation of Williamsville Road.
Right.
God, that went on for a long time.
Yep.
And John Prentice came, yeah?
Six. Seventeen, wow. Motion?
How many?
Motion, we accept it?
Kendall?
Second.
Craig. All favor? I got that down, though. Two more. June seventh, two thousand eighteen. Oh, wow. That was, it feels like it was yesterday.
Who was behind? Uh, we approved the one on one forty-seven. It was over a year, but we got there.
Motion?
What's the date on that one?
June seventh.
June seven eighteen.
Do you have that one?
June seven?
You were there.
No, I wasn't.
Yeah. You were there.
Yeah, you were. Oh, so Sarah was absent.
Oh, Craig was not here. That's all right. Okay, you're right. Craig, sorry.
You're right. Good memory.
Thanks to your page.
Motion to accept?
I'll second that.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
Okay.
Just as a comment, I think there's some follow-up on this. Is there something we need to do with?
We'll look at that after.
Put that as a...
I'll put that up the next meeting.
To-do list. We gotta develop a to-do list, I guess.
All in favor? Good. Abstained. Last one. May thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. Two pages, three pages.
Make a motion, we approve, but before we run to approval, I have a couple comments.
Okay.
But I think we make a motion to approve, we second it, and then we have discussion. I'd like to enter the discussion comment.
Okay. Tom, motion to approve. Kendall's second?
Second.
Yep. Discussion?
At, at the, in the first page, coming down there, it says, "Ed Blanchard asked about whether or not K S Surety would be hardship for developers. Vin assured this is only applicable for, to any solar and wireless companies looking to build in town." I would add, all applicants have complied. We haven't had anybody say anything about doing it. They wrote checks and did it.
Well, that's...
And it was said in the, in the meeting.
It was said in the meeting.
I think I said it.
Oh, okay. Where is it?
I don't have a big problem if we don't include it, but it's...
It's not really necessary. And Vince is basically there just to give a general description of what actually happened, not a verbatim.
On the second page, the fourth paragraph down, "Mike Foley and Al Alfonso asked how we can be certain the cost will be enough in twenty years for decommissioning. The formula provided by places includes a two-and-a-half percent yearly increase that will guarantee the funds will be available in twenty years and will be adequate." That's not technically correct. The escalation rate does not guarantee that the funds will be available. In fact, the escalation rate is applied at year zero, and the escalated value is what's put into the fund. So, they're actually giving you the twenty-year value upfront. It's not dependent on collecting an interest rate over time.
Okay.
Now...
So, we should strike the word guarantee?
Well, includes a, a twenty-year increase period. I was gonna add, the twenty-year forward calculated amount is what goes into the fund at year one. Now, I, I stand ready to be corrected, but that's the way I've read all the agreements. It's on the last page of the applications usually. They, they give you the formula, and they calculate it up, and they say, here's, year, year one is fifty thousand dollars, year twenty is a hundred thousand dollars. Here's a hundred thousand dollars for your fund. In other words, it's really...
Well, basically, what, this is just saying what that fund is about. I think...
Well, it doesn't say it correctly. That's my point. I would put a period after increase.
Yep.
Strike the next sentence and say, the escalated, the, the twenty-year forward, or the, the escalated amount, the twenty-year escalated amount is what's in the fund, is what's put in the fund at year one. Sometimes it's two percent, sometimes it's two and a half percent.
So, the twenty-year, twenty-year...
Of what they call forward calculated, or future value.
Just pay the twenty escalated amount.
Yeah. Is put in the fund at year one is put.
And you did say that. Okay.
Year zero.
Or year zero?
Year zero. Okay.
And down at the, Ed asked about the overlay district, and you replied, "It would cost tens of thousands of dollars for them to make it possible." I, I don't know what that means, but I think I would change it to, "It would cost tens of thousands of dollars for an overlay district to be developed."
Okay.
I think that's what you meant.
Yeah.
And I think that, I'm just trying to, you know, you pick these things up a year later, you gotta remember what you were talking about, so.
Overlay district, for an overlay district.
Good job to Patty for going back and cleaning these all up.
How did she do? Did she go back and listen to the video?
Well, we have video, we have tape, and we have notes.
I think so, yeah.
Wow.
Good for her.
Okay. We make a, a motion to approve with changes?
Oh, and the last one?
No, we already did that. We just make a motion to accept the changes.
That, that's, I make a motion to accept it with changes?
Second.
All in favor? Anyone here?
I wasn't happy at all.
Okay.
And absent none, so we're all here.
Good. I saw that's all done.
That's a lot of work. Well, listening. And these, these meetings are so exciting.
So, those are all rubbish. Excess copies. Bill, are you here for a reason, or? No.
Did he say no?
No, he said yes.
He didn't say anything. It should be said.
It's always yours.
Twenty-five minutes to eight, huh?
That's a quick bill.
Uh, just some quick questions. I wanna remind the board that, and today's the twentieth. On the twenty-seventh, the appeal period for the special permit for Williamsville will expire, and then they're gonna potentially enter into the pre-construction phase. I sent the previous chairman and the planning board as a whole. I don't know if I sent you as a whole, but I certainly sent to Patty. I was asked to prepare a cost estimate to provide construction support. So, that's sitting there.
I haven't seen that.
I can, I can send it again.
So, this, you're, you're giving us an estimate of what it's gonna cost us, cost...
Borrego.
Borrego, through, through the town.
Till, to finish it up, very much like they did in theory in Gardner Road.
Yeah.
Which still isn't signed up.
So we, are we already under contract for you to do that, or no? Do we... So we, we could...
No. So Vince asked for, and Borrego asked for a cost estimate
Okay.
to do the construction support as outlined in the special permit.
Yeah.
So I sent that to him and a hard copy to Patty. I thought it was presumptuous to send it to the entire board, because Vince asked for it. Um, but I want you to know that it's in your possession, and of course, I can forward it to you.
Could you please forward it, and we'll, we have a meeting coming up on July fifth? Um, so it would probably be appropriate at that time, um...
Well, it's already in your files somewhere, but I can...
I know, but we, we'll discuss, we have to discuss it at the meeting whether we're gonna have to do it.
Correct.
July four, uh, it's gonna go to the fifth Thursday?
The fifth, Thursday the fifth.
Oh, okay.
So we'll, we'll just, we'll bring it up at that meeting and discuss if you could send that to, you can send it to all of us, or...
Well, that's my next question. So Vince was kinda particular on what I did and did not send. If any member of the board asked me to send something to the board, I would send it to you all, and that was his instruction. Uh, but routine stuff, I didn't send to the entire board, and I don't know what the chairman's pleasure is.
The chairman's pleasure is that unless someone objects to getting the emails, that he sends to everyone all the time.
Everyone all the time?
Everyone all the time, so they can, the members can either choose to read it and be involved or not, but...
I think it's good to give them.
Does everyone agree with that, or...
I'd like to make a suggestion that we develop, um, maybe, uh, like a Dropbox application? So we're not all getting billions of emails with documents attached. We don't have to manage those files. A Dropbox is literally that, a box. You have a code to get into it. You can make a Dropbox, make it all the planning board, or you could make Dropbox by planning board with sub Dropbox projects. But you would get a notification by email that says, someone just put something in the Dropbox. And you gotta go look at it. And then you click on the Dropbox, up comes the document, you read it, you print it, you can do anything you want with it. Put it away, and then
Yeah.
you don't have to deal with your file.
Except for me, Tom, I don't do Dropboxes, because I don't like them.
Yeah, I don't know, related though.
Well, there might be some other...
What's the deal with the town email, because that might just, you know, not serve a purpose for the Dropbox if we just get our own town emails now?
We can't wait.
Patty, Patty has said she...
I've seen, yeah, I've seen that email, I just don't know where it went.
Here's what, here's what I do, and I might be doing it wrong. I get an email, it's got an attachment on it, I open up the email. I take the attachment, I open up the attachment. Then I can print it and read it, or I can, and I usually take that attachment and I say, well, for example, one forty seven Williamsville Road, and I put it in a planning board folder called one twenty seven Williamsville Road. Now, this becomes my management issue. And if someone wants to see the public record of my management of my files, I gotta go in here and pull all this stuff up.
Is it feasible to ask that, maybe just assign, assess, uh, attach them all to just the planning board? If they got an email out there through the town that we can utilize, it comes to the town and then we can, we can actually manage it there, is that feasible?
I don't know, but I'm finding my filing life cumbersome, and I'm looking for a way out of it.
Well, first off, Patty is put in, and asks the, the, um, eight, the guy that does the emails, to sign each one of us a town email. Because our, the way we do emails now is not legal.
It's not legal to go to your own personal?
No, it's not supposed to.
Not supposed to.
You're not supposed to.
Lot of towns do it, but it's not right.
Not supposed to. So you're supposed to get that. So everyone will have their own email address. How are you handling your own files?
Well, I know that. But if I had a Gmail account on town, I'd never, I could open them, read them, print them, but I'd put it back there.
And leave it.
And
That makes sense.
I won't overload my personal email.
Right.
And that would work for me.
Right.
Well, we can investigate doing that.
Are you saying I send big files?
No, not you at all.
It sounds like it, though.
I do.
It's just, it's just the accumulation of, of a couple of years of this stuff.
I'm on a few other boards, and I separate by board and, like you said, project and date, but it gets cumbersome.
Yeah.
Just as a note, that anything that goes either to Vince or to the entire board always goes to plan@hubbardston dot mass. So Patty always gets copied.
But this is an example that your, your, that's a very important information, your costs, it was just sent to one person in, in the planning. Disseminated. Um, this information has to be disseminated by the entire...
Excuse me. One more thing about the Dropbox is it becomes the file cabinet.
Correct, I've used them before.
Yeah, and, uh, I don't know what your opposition to it is, you probably have a valid one, but...
Because I've been hacked several times with Dropboxes.
Well, there might be a more secure version. I use the word Dropbox as a generic term.
Why don't we do this? We'll, we'll leave the, the bill, we'll send all the emails to everyone, and we'll investigate, get rolling. Get the emails for everyone.
Makes sense.
Yeah, wait a second, and then we'll, um, we'll talk to the IT guy with the town, see if he can figure, figure a system out for us.
So, just asking Craig a question, I know you, you don't wanna know that you worked on the DBW, but Dennis, uh, my understanding, and I haven't witnessed it or seen it, but Dennis O'Donnell O'Conne, Dennis O'Donnell.
O'Donnell, yeah.
Is using some kind of a system by which, if you buy a tire for a truck, the tire purchase order goes against that truck and that truck's file, and it's...
No idea, sorry.
Okay.
It's all computerized.
Yeah, and he's running a, he, he got rid of two file cabinets.
Yeah.
He said he had a system for that, too.
And that would be great if we could do something like that.
Well, I think we can get the IT people involved to tell them what we're looking for, 'cause I was involved with that one, I worked for the climate corrections, I organized and designed a lot of different systems that they still utilize, and...
Well, thank you for volunteering for that committee.
Well, um, I think we should bring the IT guy in and talk to him.
Good idea.
Um, set it up maybe for our next meeting, they, on the agenda, to see if we can get the gentleman, a person here to talk to, to see how we can set it up, because I know being on other boards, I'd like to see that done on those also. I don't like seeing a lot of paperwork personally, I like this, um, they know, to store it there instead of printing everything out.
There's a, there's another...
I print everything.
I print a lot of stuff, but I don't wanna have to keep it, so I, you know, I want it somewhere electronically. But there's another method to my madness. When you have the ID guy in, uh, IT guy in here, there's this concept of, I'm not sure how it works now, but we oughta map out how it works now.
Correct.
Right.
And I think what happens is Mr. Jones wants to build a house.
On Main Street.
He comes in here, and he, and he gets some permit papers and goes home, fills them out, and mails them in, or whatever he does. That could all be done electronically, web-based, and we wouldn't have this, um...
It would speed everything up for everybody involved.
What it does is it relieves the clerk
Correct.
of answering the phone and, and providing the copy and all this kinda stuff. And then we get clerk hours freed up, and now we can do other things with this clerk.
You could actually notify people through the website when they're, everything's updated from the get, and they can get it right off the website. It, it saves a lot of...
Yeah, it's still a little bit dreamish, dreamy-ish.
Actually, they do it, uh, most places do that now, so it's not very hard to get to.
You know, that's looking out at the horizon, but something that, rather than say, oh, we need more clerk, we need more clerk, let's do something that relieves the clerk of these, some routine activity.
I'll, I'll, uh, we can't, we can ask the IT person to come, but I'm not sure the town...
I don't know how that works, so...
Yeah, I'll run it by the town administrator
Okay.
and say, can we have him come, or...
Right, right.
So we, we can't ask someone to come and then have the town...
Well, I...
Right, right.
I put together a plan that did some of what I spoke. In fact, it went beyond that. And I put in a budget with Vince's help, to Brian Bullock, and it, memory serves me right, it was seven thousand six hundred dollars. And I've been looking for that money ever since. I, I saw a notation in a margin once that said it was moved to capital. And...
It wasn't voted on at the town meeting?
No, I believe it was. It's in some kind of pretty big IT number.
Okay, why don't we do this?
And we need to find out if we can peel some of that out to spend...
Can I make a motion that we ask the chairman to get ahold of the town manager to get further into this and possibly the money, and so we, at our next meeting, we can discuss it further?
And just getting an agenda ready for the July fifth meeting, so that would be one of the items on it. Is the town record? Uh, what do we call it? Town, no.
What?
What are we, what are we gonna be? Uh, email, handling emails?
Emails and, and files, uh, electronification?
I'll notify you of the board health, the same.
Data management, data we got.
Thank you. That sounds good.
I like electronification.
So that'll be on the agenda, please bring everything you, everyone has, too.
I got something on that.
And you can bring stuff, anything.
Yeah, I just talk a lot.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, seriously, if you could bring the structure of something you did before as an example, that might be very helpful.
Uh, okay, Bill, so
From memory, I don't have it.
We're gonna, are we gonna put you, Bill, the one forty seven Williamsville?
I don't know if you need me, uh...
I don't, we don't need you here, I'm just gonna, I'm putting it on the agenda.
I'll, I'll email the documents. I don't have your email.
Me? Oh.
Well, mine, I believe Patty. Should it be linked through the planning board first, or how do you normally do that? You send, you send it right out to them? I can give you my email, it's easy.
Yeah, we, Bill sends every, has everyone else's email, he'll send it directly
All right.
until we can sort this out.
Right, until you change all your emails.
Maybe I, 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 I would anticipate that you're not gonna have a problem being, being approved, obviously, you've done the whole thing, so plan on doing it.
That's your call.
I'll ask you another question.
No.
As, as we transition from no more Vin to this new board, do you have a sense of, um, items pending? Or beyond what you've already expressed, that you could report to us, so that we would be able to view this through the transition?
Uh, well, I've been told that you're supposed to be getting three more solar farms, but...
Well, they're not pending, 'cause they're not really here.
Yeah.
But if there's anything actually here that Vin, uh, I mean, we gotta talk to Vin, too, but...
Yeah.
Um, if you do anything like that, you just said one, you know, the, your constru- pre-construction estimate, that, but is there anything else like that? That would be very helpful if...
Well, Gardner Road is not final.
That's what you said just a second ago.
Yeah, I mean, you granted them permission to generate, but they haven't been finally signed off. And they, they are threatening, or they have mentioned threatening, so the wrong word, apologies. They have mentioned that they're proposing to sell that one. But they need your say-so in order to do so, and your final sign-off, and we haven't walked the site or done any final proof and checklist in nature.
Process steps.
They haven't completed everything on their list anyways, they haven't finished the, I went by still all the, uh, erosion control stuff is still up.
Yeah, so
So they're not...
By means of example, that's, yeah.
Yeah, so they're not complete yet.
They are not complete, in my opinion, though. And of course, you've been working on the other solar farms, the fact that they're, I don't think any one of them is in compliance at this point in time, because they, they owe you an annual report and...
That's gonna be on our agenda, either next, next meeting or the meeting after that, so...
I did know that there's a brand-new driveway built on Hillville Road over the weekend. I mentioned that to the chairman, he said he might get to it, but the previous...
There's also one, I was mentioning
They're everywhere.
Old Princeton.
Old Princeton, you had one, and then there was another one, too.
Was it?
It was Old Princeton.
Old Princeton or New Westminster?
Old, old Westminster.
No, I was told, oh, oh, Prin- Princeton.
Okay, well, let's, we'll stop that for a second.
Anyways. I got a photograph of one on...
We're actually gonna get to that in a minute, just, 'cause that's in the, uh, stuff, so. The only thing you have active with us right now is one forty seven Williamsville Road.
Right.
And we have no outstanding bills of you.
No.
We owe you money, the money should be in the account, which we're gonna verify. We owe you money from the Marinelli debacle. That money's been voted town meeting, that check should be coming. And you're telling us now as well that Gard- the two Gardner Road projects are not complete at this point, but you're not actively doing anything.
I'm not doing anything.
Yeah. Will they contact you?
I've mentioned it to Borrego, and they keep telling me that they are actively preparing to sell it. And I seem to recall, they say they need a lien release, or they need a release of some form
From us.
from the planning board.
So do they, this forty, one forty seven Williamsville, do they need, will they contact you to get permission to start? Well, they haven't finished, they still have to put all the money up and all, do all the other things, so... So...
I don't know what that process is. Sometimes they call Vince, and Vince will call me, sometimes they call me and I will call Vince. If they contact me, I'll reach out to you.
Yeah, I'll, 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 I'll contact Dean.
And that's one forty seven.
No, no, that's Gardner Road.
Two thirty-two and two thirty...
I'm just saying, are we gonna have any interaction with them before Williamsville starts? The answer is, we don't know, maybe yes, maybe no.
Well, why would we let them start that one if they haven't finished the other one?
Well... Well, the part...
Makes sense.
Well, because they're two separate projects, you can't...
You're saying, you don't really have...
I know, but you, legally, you can't.
You don't have inter, inter project leverage?
Remember, we had a building inspector that went out of his way to help somebody, you can't.
Can't do that.
You, you, you can use your experiences dealing with a contractor and how that you're gonna deal with them on another site, but
Well...
it's a different property owner, it's a different project.
Is there a way to write them a very nice letter that just says, hey, I understand you guys?
I always write a very nice letter.
I understand you guys are trying to finish up the project. Submit your list of open item.
You have every right to say, we anticipated that project to be complete by this time, and we give you a timeline to finish. Because they're past the timeline that they said that they would be.
And that's listed on the special permit?
That is a special permit, not a site permit, yep.
Well, I don't know if this is the right meeting to do that, but, Tom, would you?
I will contact Dean and ask him for an explanation or come to the meeting on July fifth.
Yeah, yeah, we need, we need to get communicating and get it done.
Yeah, these guys like to take a long time with everything.
Well...
If they start that without...
I mean, they're generating power already.
No, no, I'm talking about the other one.
Yeah, but we can stop that if they really wanted to know.
Yeah, you say you can, but that's all those...
I believe it's harder to do than...
Uh, Tom will contact Dean.
Tom Bradco.
Oh, yeah. Dean, it's my note.
Yeah, but this Tom thing is way overused.
Dean, two pro.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman.
To meeting. Or give a written explanation. And...
Most, just to clarify, most of the stuff that I only sent to Vin was about the schedule or
Yeah, I understand, yeah.
it was not major decision or any of those kind of things.
And you've heard about three other places poss- solar farms possibly coming in?
Yeah.
Do you wanna say anything about that, or you just rather not?
I think that, I don't, you know, the, the Borrego, uh, Old Westminster didn't pan out, I have a feeling that the other ones probably are gonna have the same fate.
Okay, so...
Really?
Yeah.
It's very, very difficult for these people to put that much power in these lines, there's not a whole lot of places they can go.
That were run out of capacity.
That's the problem with, with overlay districts, quite honestly. There's not many places they can go. So you've just heard, it's a rumor.
I've been approached, yeah.
Okay.
Well...
Solar companies.
Okay.
I've been asked if I would work on them, obviously I can't. Can, can you request from National Grid, like, a town map of where solar panels could possibly go?
Yeah, you gotta pay. That's where the Internet Connect study is.
I don't know the answer.
I think that's where the Internet...
That's what an Internet can, that's, that's exactly what it is.
And it costs a lot of money.
Yes, they do.
Huge money.
That's why the statement to do an overlay district, it really is very involved, because you gotta make sure the infrastructure's there. If you propose a district and the infrastructure's not there, it's kinda meaningless. Um, and the city of Gardner did it, has done it in two different locations.
I don't know if they've done it yet.
Pardon me?
I don't know if they've done it yet.
Oh, yeah, they got two...
By overlay?
Two overlay zones, and there's one in front of city council right now for a third.
Yeah, and, and, uh, Ashingham has one.
Yeah.
But they're, if you look at...
They're a local electric company.
Yeah.
Right.
So they know exactly what they have.
Yeah, they don't have to do an Internet.
Yeah.
And if you, I have a solar system on my house and dealing with National Grid to, to get solar systems hooked up.
It's a lot of work.
It's, it's just a lot of time, it takes, it would be, we'd be here years possibly to do that, 'cause, sorry. Okay, moving on, thank you, Bill.
The ones that exist have been a big financial, and I think other type of...
Can't all yell at me.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Yeah, well, here's your places thing for tomorrow. Next very important thing we have to do, which is part of the reorganization, is when we do an A and R?
Signature page.
Uh, thing, we have to do a signature page for the registry of deeds.
Correct.
One final question, do you have an alternate?
Not yet. That, the, that discussion has been going on with the, um, town. There's, we have three, we have three official people who are requesting to be an alternate. And then, uh, two more people are made, quite, ask questions about doing it. So at our meeting on July.
Fifth, fifth?
No, we're not gonna do it up to fifth, we'll see how it goes, but.
Okay.
With, our, one of our upcoming meetings, before the selectmen said they're gonna make decisions on some of this stuff on July twenty-third. So before that meeting, we'll meet, we'll talk to all the people, review all the applications, and we'll make our recommendations to the selectmen, so let's, that's where we are with that.
Because I've been copying your previous alternate on the major correspondence.
You can do that, I mean, this is, yeah.
Well, you don't have one, so. As of June, all, all appointments expire, right?
June thirtieth.
Oh, June thirtieth.
Yeah, June thirtieth.
That's all I got?
Good, thanks, Bill.
Alright, outta here.
Thanks a lot, Bill.
Thank you.
Nice meeting you.
Nice meeting you, take care.
So we have to print our name neatly?
In legibly.
Legibly, yeah. Sign it. Election appointment year. Election appointment, uh, term expires. So that would be, uh.
The town website tonight.
Is, I haven't seen it yet.
Uh, you probably won't get on it, it'll be tomorrow, I think.
Yeah, well, they said, yeah, they're uploading it today, so.
I think it's a face more than, I've been assured the content is still in there.
Yeah, I, I seen it, looks pretty good.
Well, I saw it this afternoon, they had it here.
Oh, really?
What are we, eighteen?
Had it shooting on the wall.
Today?
No, the, no, the date, the year.
I think it was today.
We're two thousand and eighteen, Ken, Tom's up next year, I'm up for next year, okay.
It's, uh, no matter what size screen you're on, it adapts.
Yeah, be nice.
So what is that, you, I'm, I'm missing.
Oh, the new town website.
Oh, wow.
It, there's a rollout, I, I think it's tomorrow.
I heard it was gonna go up.
It's going up tonight, but I think they said it takes five hours, and.
Yeah.
And then you don't wanna throw a bunch of edits in, you wanna let it cook for a while, and, tomorrow. I'm showing my ignorance.
I think it's baked.
Term expires six.
Oh, this is the standard format.
Yep.
What are we supposed to do with this?
I just, do, did you get the email?
I think I did.
We're gonna do that in a minute here.
Oh, okay.
Okay, Tom, sign this.
Thank you.
While Tom's doing that, one of the things I would like to do, with the board's permission, is be one of meeting, we'll have the meeting start. We'll leave ten or fifteen minutes at the beginning of the meeting, like the selectmen do, for questions from anyone that wants to come in and ask a question.
I think that's a great idea. Open meeting time?
Yep, just the open session time, I think it's a good idea.
Yep.
So if people have a question, we can't make any decisions based on, um, any, any approvals for anything, but if someone wants to, I don't know, geez, what do I need for a building lotsite or something? They can come in and ask that question.
Sounds good.
Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, when your turn ends? I got it here.
And the meeting times are six-thirty, right?
Five, you, you know, that.
Yeah, when we do these special, yeah, six-thirty or seven, I don't know, whatever one wants to do.
Okay, cause on, on the website, it says six-thirty.
It does right now, but we, we can change it.
We can change that, yeah.
Is everyone okay with Wednesday still? That's the other question, I guess, is you okay with Wednesday?
What are we saying, six-thirty?
Six-thirty works for me.
The meeting, regular meetings are first Wednesday of the month?
Yep.
Is everyone's happy with that date?
Yep.
Six-thirty, everyone happy with?
Sounds good to me.
Yep.
So.
I make a motion, we set it for six-thirty on Wednesdays, first Wednesday of the month.
And you don't have to. It's already that way, so you don't have to change it.
Right, okay.
Bradco's twenty-twenty.
Yep.
I was nineteen, you're twenty-one.
He doesn't look twenty-one.
Oh, I wish I was.
Yeah.
So I've got, I, mine ended twenty-six.
That date goes in there.
Yep.
June.
Oh, that one goes?
Yeah, June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one.
Twenty-twenty-one.
Greg, you're twenty-two, and the new guy must be eighteen plus.
No, my term expires by then.
Well, that's what the town report says.
I'm one new for five years.
Yes, you are.
You're twenty-one.
But you, this report, two thousand and seventeen.
Oh, okay.
They say, that's your date, now, chances are, I think, um, somebody quit, and you were appointed, and then the following week, June, you had to get elected.
Correct.
But you only get elected for the remainder of the unserved term.
Right, that was me, that was me, I got elected to the remainder of Marianne DePinto's.
That's right.
I got the write-in votes.
You got, you got elected for the remainder of, um, uh, Peter Jeff's term.
For five years.
Right, then, when I ran against, um.
Somebody.
Somebody.
It, I can't even remember his name.
Uh, Craig Le- uh, Scott LeBlanc?
Yep, Scott LeBlanc, he beat me on that, but they, I had enough write-in votes.
Oh, so you got the other open?
Right, yeah.
Oh, okay, well, anyway, I don't think this report lies.
Alright, so you're gonna put down twenty-twenty-one.
Six-thirty, twenty-twenty-one.
Year is it now?
Yeah, I know, that's what I was asking, we say, what, what, what year are we in?
And it's, it's fiscal, fiscal year nineteen, is it?
Next week.
I think it is, yeah.
Next week, fiscal year nineteen, I never thought I'd live this long. If no one is gonna live this long, I would've taken better care of myself. That's the old joke.
Well, the other thing we're doing different, a little bit different here too, as well, is.
Uh, real quick, Tom, are we supposed to be doing up and?
Yeah, oh, top and bottom, yes, I'm sorry.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah, both of them.
Sorry.
All the vouchers that come in, and the bills, the bills that come in, the vouchers are done, and the payment of any of these bills. I've instructed the clerk that we have now, that she's not, they'll do, she's not to release anything for payment or put anything in until it's been approved by the board.
And does the board sign for all of that, or?
The chairman can sign, or there can be two people sign, two of the members can sign, but a lot of these things have been going in, and she's just signing them, and that's, and, and this is totally.
It should come through the board.
It should come through the board, it's totally not anything to do with, Patty did not do anything wrong.
Right.
The systems are kinda funny to understand. And I've been working with Lori, the accountant, for a couple months with Patty.
Right.
To get this thing straightened out, so I've told Patty, any bills that come in have to come.
Here?
Here, before they get sent, and, um.
By here, do you mean to you, or to this table?
To this table.
To the mi- to the meeting.
Oh, good.
To the meeting, in the meeting, and we're gonna vote on it.
And on the agenda.
We're gonna put on the agenda, we're just gonna have a standard thing, correspondence and any transfers and stuff like that, and the money, so everyone knows.
Correct, yeah. And then it's on the regenerative, it's, it's all filed that way too.
Right, so I'll have, I'll, whoever the clerk is, if the new clerk, will have all the paperwork done, and we'll just sign off on it. Everyone okay with that? We don't have to vote on this stuff, but, so.
Right, sounds good.
Everyone happy with that?
It's actually the way I think it's supposed to be.
Oh, whatever. Not going there. Um, I've got a bunch of bills here from Pla-. We'll just talk to all everyone, so we can save time, cause we're over it already.
We, we knew we were gonna be.
No, I wasn't, I was, so anyways, we've got all these bills here, one from Places, which is three hundred and one dollars. Um, and that is for Borrego on Williamsville Road, uh, this was one of the bills, this is actually the final bill that he was talking about. So we're gonna get this signed, or just approved.
Now, why do we have to pay that?
We're not paying it, the, the Borrego paid a deposit to the town, so when they do special permit, we anticipate the engineering cost.
Okay. Okay.
And the, the company that's doing it has to pay the town upfront, because bill, bill can't work, or, the engineer can't work directly for the.
Right. Right. Correct.
Company, they have to work for the town, so we hire him to do the work, and they pay for it, they pay us, and then we pay Bill.
Right. Just like the board helps you do it.
Exactly the same as the.
Revolving fund.
Right.
Put the money in, take it.
It's actually not a revolving fund, it's the.
Oh, it isn't?
No, it goes to the fifty-three G account.
Okay.
According to Bill. Just learning.
Alright, me too.
So we have this bill here from Places, this is his final, final bill, and then we have one for the Gardner News, that was for the wireless facility. This is about the new, uh, public hearing bill. And then, there's another Gardner News one, oh, it's the same one, this is just a statement. Go together. Wanna look at these, you can?
Oh.
Please give them back, and we'll put those in for, for payment, or for, in for.
What was the wireless facility?
That was the, it wasn't the wireless facility, that was changing the zoning bylaw.
Oh.
They have to do a pass on.
Oh, and you put the notification in the Gardner.
And that's exactly why we're doing what we're doing.
Yeah, yeah, where'd the money go?
Okay, so everyone.
That's good.
That's kind of the things I wanna.
Thank you for setting that up, and thanks for working with the account.
Okay, is everyone here? Yes, that's good. I feel, I really feel like standing now with all these papers. Um, yeah, I'm getting there.
You give them any food, then?
Yeah. Okay, uh, this one here, okay, so we all know that we have to fill the position, that the position has to be filled for the associate member. I think you've all heard what we said, we have three current ones, and there's a couple more people that wanna do it. I think, has everyone sent the, uh, email with, uh, this gentleman that wanted to do it?
Mm-hmm.
That, have you received this?
No.
Okay, I could, I could send this to everyone as a copy of his, not a resume, it's a letter saying, can you see this?
Uh, yeah, and there's also another one from him on the eighteenth, I'll send you that, and then you can send them both around.
I'll send everything around to everyone, so that you'll have everything we know about him.
Okay.
And who cuts us out in the next meeting?
Uh, well.
It might be early.
Yeah.
We've got some other people.
We'll see if everyone's, I.
We've got some more paperwork to collect, I think.
I think we got several more people to come, um, to put. I've gotta just verify with Ryan when the selectmen are gonna want the information.
Right, right.
Okay, so we'll either do it at that meeting, which gets me to the next subject, and you'll, you'll understand more when I say the next subject. Uh, this just came in five o'clock today, um, there's a person wanting to, the owner is Tom Cisco. He wants to break, uh, open up a stone wall for the new bylaw. So we're hitting, hitting it off, hard, hitting it hard here, so we have to have a, a meeting to hold this pub- public hearing for this.
That's right.
So we're gonna, uh.
scenic roads hearing.
Pardon, scenic.
At Old Westminster property?
Old Westminster Road?
Seven, Old Westminster Road.
Is that a, um.
Lot seven, Old Westminster Road.
That's the old Cisco lumber.
I'm sorry?
All that property up there, on Old Westminster.
Lot seven, let me just, it's lot seven, Old Westminster Road. Uh, don't have an address, actually.
It's, uh, an even number, and it's about a hundred eighty-eight, a hundred, somewhere in there.
Lot seven.
Eighty-eight, lot, no.
There's a sign on it, the place for sale.
Yeah.
There's another lot near there that they blew through, and I don't remember ever getting them.
It doesn't actually have an address, actually?
Well, you don't get a street address until you get your building.
Correct.
So it says lot seven, Old Westminster Road, it's the Ciscos, uh, Vin Ritchie is the realtor, as it turns out, so. He's, uh, he's, he actually made the application for the owner.
It's July twenty-third, the selectmen are appointing.
July twenty-third, so we, so we have.
So we have to have it done before.
So, we're gonna, we have to advertise this, and I said that we would have a meeting as soon as we can get the advertising out.
Mm-hmm.
So we're trying to get it for July eleventh, and that's why I was kinda hesitating about the fifth, cause I think we're gonna have a lot of stuff on the agenda for the fifth.
Right, right.
And we can have this public hearing on this.
You wanna do it on a Wednesday night, ju- on that week, the eleventh, that's, that works.
Yeah, July eleventh.
I could do it, it's not the twelfth.
Yeah, as long as it's the twelfth.
Six-thirty again?
He didn't ask you about the twelfth, he asked you about.
No, I have a commitment on the twelfth. I know, I know how you do things.
So, I can give this to, uh, you okay for July? So we'll meet the fifth, and we'll meet the following week. And I'll try to keep on the agenda this special hearing, which will give us plenty of time before eight o'clock to do, uh, talk about the people who want the job. So is that, sound like a plan?
So the eleventh is what time?
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty?
Yeah.
And that'll be on the agenda, too, listed that we're gonna do the hearing for Cisco, and then we'll do the, uh, the application review?
Yeah, does that sound good? That's kinda, that's kinda what I'm trying to, oh, yeah.
Right, right, sounds good.
That way we can leave the fifth, which is our regular meeting for any other reg- regular business.
Mm-hmm.
And then, um, once, that'll give me time to get all these people.
Getting together.
Get, get together, everyone can read their information, and we can ask.
You're gonna send it all e- email, you said?
Right, and then they can all come, if they wanna come, they can come, if they, I mean, like Mark Davis, been a, done that job for many years, and so, uh, they can come or not come, we don't need them here.
Right.
But if they like to come, then.
Right, right.
Like to hear from them, so.
And Patty has my email, so I'm all set with that.
So you're, okay, we'll get.
Do you need it for you to send it to me, or would you go through her with the email?
Well, she, your email address was on the email string, and I'll just take it off of that, yes.
Okay, yes, yeah, okay.
Then, that's good away, the next thing, means of communication, but go ahead, Tom.
Uh, we're kinda thinking about future meetings, I heard a number of really good ideas tonight, and, uh, of course, one of them was from me, but. No, but Bill had some ideas about the, the computer and whatnot, um, we oughta maybe come to a meeting with our kind of. Here's the, the topics that we should address this year, and, uh, some will float to the surface as being really important things, and others will be, well, when we get to it, we get to it.
Correct.
But, uh.
Future agendas.
If, if we don't hear the ideas at the beginning of the year, it's hard to plan the year, so.
Well, we're supposed to be the planning board, we're supposed to do that.
No, cards and letters, you know, bring in your, uh, favorite projects and go sit and calculate them and, uh, figure out which ones we do first.
Okay, I'm just gonna get things straight in my head here, so.
Sometime, I don't know, seventh, I mean, seven five, seven eleven, we don't have to do it all at once, we can be putting them in a box.
Sounds good.
And then.
A drop box.
Yeah, and then at some, at some point, take them all out and sort them out.
Okay, so, so July eleventh will be the hearing for that Cisco property, and interviewing and discussing the alternate member. Everyone's good with that?
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay, the July fifth meeting, getting back to Tom, we jumped the gun here.
I do?
Yeah, we're gonna talk about the July fifth meeting, we have any other regular business, but we don't really have a lot of other business.
Six o'clock or six?
Six thirty. It says, I'll change the website.
Up to the, okay.
The website does say six thirty.
Six, no, the, 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 the fifth says six o'clock for.
Oh, okay.
So six thirty's a better time. Okay, so we're, at that meeting, we have any other stuff that comes in, which is the lot. But I wanna move beyond just the organizational part, and we want to come in to set our agenda for the, for the next year. Because we don't have, at this point anyway, we don't have any projects, okay, that, that need our specific attention, except for one forty-seven Williamsville. And I'll check on this Gardner Road one. We'll look at those, those two things, and I want, I would like everyone to write down what their, their agenda is.
Okay.
For, for the year.
And also, can I interject?
Sure.
Tom was talking about our ideas on how to update our communications and all that, that also would be attached.
That'd be in there too, yeah.
But also part of that was, you wanna get off, see what we could do, talk with the IT guy, kind of now, we'd go together.
Right, we can talk that, everything.
Okay.
So we're, unless we have some other, you know, maybe an A and R coming to something.
Right, right.
Well, we got the job description and the, uh, thing of the.
Yep, we can do all that, so we can get all that stuff together.
Sounds good.
We use it as a working meeting to kind of discuss stuff. Uh, Mr. Blanchard said he wanted to discuss the marijuana bylaw and maybe change it, something like that. Put that on the agenda, so if you'd like to come.
Now, how, how, soon before the meeting, does the agenda go out? Do, do, do we get that by email, or should we get it off the website, or?
Well, we'll, well, the, well, that, that's, I guess, that's my next thing.
Okay.
Okay, that's, if you want something on the agenda, send me an email or call me.
Okay.
And it needs to be in, no later than noon on Friday.
For the following week.
For the, not for the following week. So, if Monday of that week, we have to have the agenda in by five o'clock.
Okay.
That Monday for, to be a Wednesday meeting.
Okay.
You need two public, two days, okay?
Yeah, but you need more, you don't want a Monday afternoon, you want a Friday.
Right, so he wants it by Friday.
Yeah.
So it'll be the Friday before the Wednesday of the meeting.
There's a drop dead time of that. So, if you want something on the agenda, please call me.
Friday noon, you say?
Friday noon is good, yeah.
Oh, you'll deal with emergencies, but you don't want emergencies.
Yeah. And if anyone's anything, wants to talk about it, I mean, obviously, we can talk about, we're constrained by the open meeting law. Um, when you do these public hearings, uh, they're gonna be limited in time, they're not gonna.
Makes sense.
They're not gonna be going on till eleven o'clock at night. I get up at four thirty, so, so I'm probably like Kendall.
I like me.
Four thirty in the morning.
I thought you meant in the afternoon.
I know. Okay, did you guys give me back all those bills?
It's right here.
Okay. Uh, and these are the other, other notices from different towns about stuff, that's something we're gonna talk about. Letters that came back. Uh, there, oh, here's another law from KP Bill, uh, KP Law. This is the copy of the bill that goes to Marinelli. I mean, you guys have already seen this, this bill is the one, goes back a year, since Marinelli, and that's what we approved at the town meeting.
So it does have to be paid by the town?
Yep, yep, that's.
That's all?
That's gonna go in that pile, go to the accountant tomorrow. Um, so I'll send these around. Decisions for Board of Appeals, if anyone's interested. We had some letters returned. Uh, this is the Places, Bill, we already talked about that. And then, let's see, Patty gave this to me today. Um, the building inspector sent a letter to Gallo Builders for a new home construction at fourteen Chiccoby Drive. The building department has told, um, was told that the sale of two lots, twelve W slash five sixty-two, and twelve W five sixty-four. Were contingent on approval of the building permit issued, in that, once the building inspector had, was issued, the non-conforming lots would be purchased. Combining the records with the registry of deeds, making one conforming building lot. The building, the, obviously, the building department has not yet received proof that this has occurred.
Those two lots there were actually, the owners came to the ZBA and they were denied a building permit, actually, to build on the property, because they were not grandfathered lots.
Yeah.
According to the grandfather in clause of the Pinecrest lots. They took them to the land court in Worcester, and Worcester Ju- land court judge. Approved the building permit for them.
Oh, he did?
And if, if those are the same lots, they just built the house on there.
Okay, so, nice that you know that. So please send a copy of the newly recorded deed as proof that fourteen Chicco- uh, Chiccoby now sits on one conforming lot. Until we receive this proof, the building office will not be able to release any further building permits. Will reconsider recalling the permits already issued and will be unable to release the certificate of compliance and occupancy.
And the house is built.
So you know all about this?
Yes.
So you're, you're saying that, just out of curiosity, not a planning board issue, I don't think, but, um, two lots, they put them together, did it conform?
No, if you go back to the history of Pinecrest, when American Central Corporation, in the late fifties, early sixties, acquired all that property out there, they built all the roads. With no zoning in Hubbardston at the time, they did what they wanted and they put all, they cut them all to quarter acre lots.
Yeah, tiny.
And sold them all on time.
So this is two quarter acre lots?
That were sold to people that.
Yeah.
Would never be able to buil- build on them, because they.
But it's two quarter acre lots?
I believe.
Or something close to that.
It fell to the, uh, the old clause that it couldn't be built on. They came to the zoning Board of Appeals Board requesting a variance from the zoning, which is now two hundred feet of frontage, two acres of land. They were denied by the building inspector and the zoning Board of Appeals will not approve a variance for it, so they went to land court and the land court judge.
Do you have that judge's ruling?
I don't have it myself, no.
I'd like to read it.
I think that's what they're, that's what they're waiting for.
That's what the town, but that's kind of like everything in a nutshell, what, what that's all about, um.
Interesting.
I've, I've been involved with that for many years, uh, the building inspectors' laws, the zoning Board of Appeals, uh, Pinecrest.
Yeah.
It's been a lot of issues out there.
Uh, the other. Oh, what happened to, it just, so Patty just gave me that, because it's part of the, it's not part of the planning board stuff, but she thought it was interesting about the, the lots. Type thing, it was good that Bill was here to talk about it. Um, this is the, uh, I, I don't know if anyone's seen, this is the application from the planning board for scenic roads. So when people have to do that, and Ben was gracious enough to, uh, cause he spearheaded writing that. He wrote like a filing requirements for scenic road bylaw. It's like a list of things that have to be done, and we'll go through that. This will be in the office tomorrow, which, once it's been advertised, this is, this is the application.
This is one example of what that generically says.
This is the example that Ben is using as the first example, and he's graciously put this together for us. So it's like, um, it's like we use with the A and R, it's just, you can give it to someone, say, you wanna do it, this is what you have to do.
Mm-hmm.
So it's, the great, I mean, he just.
Yeah, he just keeps going.
Yeah, just to trim end of service for us, yeah. So, um, we're gonna miss him.
Question on the scenic roads. Um, as of the town meeting, when the article passed, is that the effective date of required compliance?
Well, it's funny that you should say that.
Well, I'm in.
Well, no, no, because that's been at the top, topic of discussion for three hours this afternoon. Joyce Green has said, and she's correct, I'm sure, that a general by, that was a general bylaw.
Yeah.
A general bylaw doesn't take effect until it's approved by Attorney General. A zoning bylaw takes effect until, uh, right at town meeting.
At the vote.
At the vote, and, and then gets reaffirmed by Attorney General. So I asked Joyce the question, well, say for the solar farm, say, say someone wants to do a solar farm. And they make their application, and that, based on the new zoning bylaws, and then that gets turned down or changed by the Attorney General, then what happens? Do they have to reaffirm?
Well, there's probably a lot of what ifs.
Yeah.
But, sh- you, you're confident that she gave you the right answer for the basic case?
Joyce, yes, she's very, very smart, yeah.
Then that's what we'll think about.
You have to go, you have to go by that until somebody says no.
Yeah, and then the general byla- uh, we already, they already ha- have a, uh, a, we already have a, a rule, a bylaw about opening stone walls anyways. So they still have to make application to us. It's just their filing requirements, the difference. That's, that general law, uh, general bylaw, just re- according to Ben anyways. Was written really to clarify the filing recommendations and techniques.
Who informs people that buy land here and are gonna do that, that they have to go through this process?
Did I have this conversation with you?
No, but I think what we ought to do is when, when.
That's the next, that's.
When land changes hands, we oughta say, hey, it's a building lot, and put up.
We've been talking about this for quite a while, we should all have, have all the requirements in one place on the website, the town website, for the board of health, for the building inspector, for the planning board.
How do I build a house?
A, B, C, D, you gotta look here, and everything should be tied together.
I talked to, um, the, the, the road superintendent.
Travis.
Travis, I keep.
Travis Brown.
Travis today with the, with the town administrator, and we're, we're gonna meet, put together, if it's okay with everyone, uh, when he does the driveway permit, so. So if someone wants to put a driveway permit in, he needs to sign off on it, and he's gonna require them to, is this a scenic road, yes or no? Does, you need to go to the planning board before everybody can give it to them?
I think I heard tonight, and I might be wrong, but let's just hypothesize, that in the last week or so, somebody blew through a rock wall on a scenic road. Did they have a driveway permit in hand to do that?
That's what, that's what you guys are fighting all the time, isn't it?
They probably don't know, a lot of people probably don't know that.
They don't know.
Well, it'd be just part of the driveway per.
I know, but a lot of people don't even get that.
I think the fault of, of, uh, the town as our organization is, there's a lot of things that people don't know are there that they have to do. It's ignorance and law is no excuse, but it's like when somebody buys a house in Hubbardston that's in a rural si- setting in the community. Has a septic system and they came from the city where the sewers, they don't know how to handle a septic system.
Putting in a garbage disposal, yeah.
One of the things on, uh, board of health website, I suggested, like, like, did a link, do's and don'ts of a septic. You know, make sure everybody gets copied this when they come in for the paperwork. And again, if we update and kind of reorganize all our, our boards and everything together. It should be right up there, here folks, here you go, this is everything you really should look at, um, just to make it easy.
Even then, you can't force them to click on the page.
And if you, you know what, and if they don't, you, you can't, you can leave the horse to water, you can't make a drink, so, um.
So we're, that's something Travis is working on, I think, uh, you guys are involved with that. We have, so we can now have a discussion about your, you've talked about, to me, you called me the other day, said this, that. They're putting holes in walls everywhere. Cruz Road, I guess there was a couple, uh, like Bill was saying. So, we really, uh. I mean, I, I, you guys drive around, Craig, I think maybe, I mean, I don't feel like driving around town looking for people putting holes in walls, you know, but.
Well, that's not what he's doing either.
No, no, I know, but he's out there, yeah.
If you observe it, that's great, yeah.
So if you find something like that, or Travis, or you hear one of the other guys say they did.
Even that's too late, you gotta get in front.
But we need a procedure, so if someone does that, we need to send them a letter and ask them to come to the.
To a meeting.
How about informing all the realtors, where they have to declare it's a scenic road, in their, in their, uh, listing?
That's a good idea.
And the scenic, uh, declare the scenic road, see town bylaw ten, and put it right on the listing.
Could do that.
That's a good idea, Tom, that's a real good idea.
Thank you, I'm full of it.
Now, two in one night doesn't usual, right?
I'm empty.
Now we're done for the year.
How does the real, so if somebody, if somebody goes to Craig, he, he's a real estate agent.
Mm-hmm.
And he lives thirty miles away, and they, and he said, I've got some prop- I go to him and say, I've got property that I wanna sell.
Mm-hmm.
In Hubbardston, would you take care of it for me? So, is it up to him to look into the town's zoning laws and blah, blah, blah?
The real, the realtor has obligations, and I'm not certain of what their obligations are, but it's generally called disclosure.
Mm-hmm.
And they have to disclose, uh.
Everything.
Incumbrances on the land and everything, they're, they're supposed to disclose everything, and we should make it a requirement that real estate listings in Hubbardston disclose, among other things.
Able to see.
That it's a scenic road.
Okay.
And they have to comply with the scenic law bylaw, see town website, page ten, progress.
All the, it's right here, right.
It also starts with the, actually, the board of health is the first one that can be in contact.
Yes, yes.
The board of health will, because they have to, they wanna do a perk test, and this is where Craig's, one of, not Craig, uh, Travis's big issues, is they need a temporary driveway permit.
Just to open up the wall.
Open the wall to go in there to do a perk test, so that's the time to say, you need to do this scenic road.
But that's still a result of a listing.
Yeah, but I mean, I don't think you're gonna get everyone ta- like Kendall was saying, well, someone's from, you know, East Hobo from something.
No, it's, it's, it's a realtor's obligation, it's not the buyer.
I know, but I don't think.
Or the seller.
Yeah.
Or the seller.
It's, it's a realtor.
Yeah, the seller would even be stronger to impose on, because he's incentivized to a greater degree than.
But a lot of folks, they own land, maybe they don't even live out here. I wanna sell this much of it.
Yeah, but you can easily figure out whether it's on a scenic road.
Maybe they don't even, I'm just saying, if, again, if we organize the, the, the town of Hubbardston's information on our website, you can have it right there, it would tell you, it's, it's not hard to do.
So, these are all the things we can discuss on the fifth.
We'll add it to the list. It sounds like it's gonna be fun.
Well, everyone make your list, I mean, please, do it.
Alright, I will, I'll check it twice.
Yeah, feel free to share it with each other before the meeting too, but please, if you share anything, don't answer it, because that would be a violation of the meeting law.
Correct.
We can't deliberate on it.
Yeah, so just say, these are my, these are my ideas, and don't answer it, and you can just, if you don't, you don't even have to, I don't care if it, it doesn't matter to me, if you do it up, I'm just saying, if you feel like doing that.
We label it proposed agenda, and, um, don't, don't do any reply alls.
I'll put all this stuff in there, the proposed agenda for the planning board year, which should cover everything we wanna talk about.
Awesome.
Sounds good to me, boss.
It's gonna be good.
Thanks, I think you're gonna have a good year, hopefully. I'm looking forward to it, I wanna move forward, I don't wanna move backwards. Hopefully we'll get, uh, cooperation from all the boards and we can all work together.
That'd be awesome. Well, thanks for being welcome tonight, guys, I appreciate it.
Thanks for coming along.
Thank you.
Nobody told you you were supposed to bring a blog or a campaign, though.
Well, I was told when it's, when it's being live, you can't do that, I heard the other meetings are okay.
Well, uh, a, a new guy buys.
What, what do you think of being recorded? Have you had, have you attended meetings that have been recorded?
Yes.
I think, did we announce that this was being recorded then?
No.
We made a mistake then.
Uh-oh.
We should've announced that it was being recorded.
Just still announce it, we're still live.
Yeah, I mean, for these people that Bill, of course, knows, Ed, Ed, uh.
Yeah, well.
Just legally, technically, you're supposed to, you're supposed to tell everybody you're wrong.